Good evening, I'd like to call the December ninth School Community Meeting to Order. And first up on the agenda is celebrating student learning, the English Department.
I'm going to turn it over to John Scopoletti, our English Department Chair. John?
Good evening, folks. So, I'm happy to speak today for our Grade 11 EEP Lane Program. Specifically, this is excited for business halls class, this is a class orations. And as you can see here in the next slide, as part of this project, what students are asked to do is to research a topic of their choice, look at all perspectives on that topic. But then, the important part where this gets exciting is they generate their own proposals about how to somehow make improvements around that topic. And ultimately, they use rhetorical strategies, as you can see here, to present these proposals to classrooms, administrators, and in any one case, a CDR. And so, again, I'm sure you all know what the telecom point of public speaking skills are. Desi released a report a few years ago where they surveyed local colleges in Massachusetts, as well as local businesses, all of whom said that the number one skill that not just high school students, but college students lack is the ability to speak well in public. So, this is a really great project that helps enforce that skill that is so crucial whether you're going into careers, whether you're going directly into college, or wherever your post-secondary plans take you. What we can see here are some of the topics, and I'm happy to say that we have several students here who are here, young adults are way more interesting than us older adults. We'll be able to tell you a lot more about that in a little bit. Some of the topics that they chose here was redesigning the age block in the high school, the Green Ribbon School Initiative, school safety, specifically the safety protocol. And then, we have some other more individual ones here, so you can see student parking, those who are high school students and high school parking situation, you can understand this is certainly a driving factor there. Another one we have, and forgive me for the overlay there, the idea of eliminating future purchases of paper textbooks, the idea of trying to go to all electronic texts. And this group, as you can see here, very pointedly chose to present outside of their trees to make this point. And then, ultimately, this is the last slide that I have here for this, before we invite us from our student guests. Why is this such an engaging form of assessment in terms of a performance-based assessment? And I detail it here, there's interviews, there are surveys, there's research, there's presentations, right? There's this idea of application, not just simply kind of re-keeping information that's what they want, they actually have to do something with that. There is no point in, right, they're designing their own proposal, they have to synthesize, as I talked about, different perspectives, different ideas. But one of the biggest things is that it's an authentic context, right? The idea is it's not just simply an assignment that a teacher's going to see and then that's the end of the story. There's people outside of the classroom that are a part of this, whether it's the audience or being interviewed, being surveyed, whatever the case might be. They analyze different viewpoints, they have to evaluate them, are they strong, are they weak, and then synthesize them to create their own. And then, ultimately, I guess it's multifaceted. On the one hand, it's the evaluation of speaking and listening skills, but there's also the use of record, that's a key part of this as well, that is certainly a component for the EEP Lane Curriculum and the EEP Exam. So, it's a nice way to prepare kids for these exams, but at the same time, to prepare them for real life. That's enough from me. So, at this point, I'd like to invite some of our students up here, six of them have come up tonight, they're representing three groups, so if you have some specific questions, we'll talk about those. They'll introduce themselves, and they'll just talk about one takeaway that they took from each of these projects. Y'all keep them on over here with the mic, and we'll do that.
I'm Chloe Tyrell.
Brendan Burke.
Paul Hoffmeister.
I'm Eli Henry.
I'm Valerie Mullen.
And I'm Sarah Danny. So, myself, Eli, Paul, Brendan all worked on a school safety initiative. And something that we really took away from the project was that there was kind of this open-endedness to it, but that it was very flexible of what you want to do, and you got to choose a project that was interesting to you. And we started out asking, okay, what's the problem you see in society as a whole? And we kind of narrowed it down to what's the problem you see in our community, whether that was your town, your school. And eventually, we narrowed it down to something that was in our school. So, that was reachable, that we could change. And something else that was really important to us from this project was that we got to actually interact with members of the community, and we really got to feel like what people think, and understand how many different communities there are in our community. And also, we found that some adults who reached out to us to ask us questions, even when they were completely, you know, not related to the project, just had interesting questions for us to answer. Great.
Also, the part of this, this is the biggest, is the authentic context is, I personally felt, like in middle school and in early high school, that a lot of the projects we were doing just felt like they were projects we were doing to save the community, whereas this project really felt like I was just making a difference in our community, and I really wanted to keep going with the project.
All right, I guess I just want to elaborate a bit on how we gather different perspectives from community members. So, we interviewed teachers and other members of the community concerned with our issue. And I just thought it was very interesting gathering all of these perspectives, and then, you know, synthesizing the classical orientation on it, and kind of having like an angle and so you can kind of go where you want.
Yeah, that's what Brendan said, I think that my favorite part of the whole thing was actually feeling like I was able to give something back to the community. It's like we're still working with, I don't know, some others on our project, and it's rewarding for me, especially like being able to be able to actively communicate, because I think like one of the first times I've been able to connect this with the project.
So, for my part, I worked on bringing back the drivers' ed program to Situate High School. And my favorite part of it is, we felt our voices were actually being heard, we were able to talk to administration, like our principal, Rob Wargo, and what we were also able to speak to members of the, members of the police, and then also the town accountant. And she reached out to us and spoke to us about how we could further our product, and it actually made us feel our voices were being heard. And this whole project, as my classmates said earlier, it wasn't spent worrying about the grade, we actually were moving forward and helping our community. And especially with a problem that applies directly to our grade, like juniors and sophomores are all worrying about getting their license, which is a problem that applied to us directly.
So, my group did the Green Ribbon Project, which is basically being certified by the federal government for being environmentally conscious. So, what I really enjoyed about it was being able to go to even high school, which is a rehired high school, and kind of comparing what our school is like to their school, seeing what we can improve, and even their principal, seeing what we can improve based off of what our school is doing. I know that was really cool, and it really showed me how easy it is to make a change within our community, as well as just seeing what, how easy it was to be able to make a change in our school with simple things that we could do, that didn't even cost much. So, I thought, I was really happy to do a project like this, because it just showed how easy it would be to make a change within our community.
And before we open up any questions, I just want to give a lot of credit to Mrs. Hall, who just creates such a great feeling, and it's not very quantifiable, but just a great vibe in her classroom, that I think really helps this kind of project take place and really take root the way that you've heard here as well. It's a great testament to the relationship building that she does with all of her students. And I think that's a huge aspect to the success of this year, so just want to give credit to her for that. Having said that, though, I just want to turn it over, anybody have any questions?
So, am I to assume that this class is, the project is completed, that they've worked on?
Sorry, I think I was behind the speed.
The project is completed, that they worked on?
For the classroom assignment, my understanding is the classroom assignment is done, but there are some, there are some ongoing steps where it lives kind of beyond just the assignment.
Right, that's what I was going to ask, if, you know, what kind of work is continuing to finish these projects?
Yeah, we've been working with Mr. Brendan, Mr. Brendan as well as Mr. Julie, trying to work on our school safety. We've also had our goal published in the situation, we're working on that, it's been published in the area. So, yeah, we're definitely interested in working on this project beyond the original assignment.
It sounds like you guys all really enjoyed working on these projects, and I just, I hear a lot about stress on students, especially in high school and college, and I'm just curious if, could I make a comment on the stress level of this project versus a traditional exam or like major research, like essay that you have to work on with a specific deadline?
I found it very, as a very stress-free project, as it was something we were passionate about. So, it wasn't an exam that we didn't know anything about, it was something we found ourselves wanting to do rather than forcing ourselves to study or take a test, it was something we wanted to do personally, and it kind of like hit home with most of us, and it kind of made it easier.
For me, I found that when I was going to class, a lot of times even when I'm doing projects, I find myself frustrated or I get bored. However, with this project, it was very stress-releasing, in any case, where I felt like I was actually doing something, it wasn't just learn about this person, create a slideshow and present it to us, it was like you're actually making a change and doing something with the work that you are using.
Yes, I was hoping that we were going to answer, I think that just shows how successful these types of projects are, and hopefully, they can continue in the future.
All right, Rado, close.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the student representatives.
So, for our report this week, we haven't been having a meeting since back in November, so we want to go back to Thanksgiving break. One of the things we wanted to highlight was the different activities we did as a high school at Situate in celebration of the break and holiday of Thanksgiving. So, we had a half-day on Wednesday, November 27th at Situate High School, this is known as a splash day for students. So, the week beforehand, students were able to sign up to participate during that half-day in two 40-minute courses or activities. There was a wide variety of courses that students could participate in, from a cappella to origami, linguistics, a tour of the new fields, and basketball competitions. So, really, there was such a wide variety that appealed to all the passions we have at the high school. It was also a really cool experience this year, because there were many splash day sessions that we could sign up for that were instructed by upperclassmen, who had designed these courses based around areas that they're really knowledgeable and passionate about. And having participated in one of these student-led courses, it was just a really cool experience to be able to learn and see these areas that you might not know that our classmates are so passionate about or knowledgeable about, just speaking to them on an everyday basis. So, that was a cool addition this year. And after these two courses, the high school gathered in the gym for our highly anticipated annual pep rally. Each grade had a section of the bleachers, and the student government of each grade put so many decorations up, they all looked great. The students were all wearing colors that corresponded with their grade, really showing class spirit. And we watched students and teachers compete in many head-to-head activities, like tug-of-war or musical chairs, and it was just a really fun way to kick off our Thanksgiving break this year. We also wanted to highlight the annual Situate Football Thanksgiving Day game. The Situate High School varsity football team had this game on November 28th, and they played against Hingham Football. And not only did the Sailors win this game with a final score of 27 to 14, but this was also the first game that they've had this season on the new field after opening, after months of construction this year. So, they were able to end this football season with a victory where it all began. And this game was highly anticipated as usual, and a great show-up.
Alrighty, so, the Triumph Honors Music Society, it's an honors music society. Wow, I can speak really well. So, that began community outreach this week, so we've been helping set up the elementary school concerts all week, which has been very cute and very fun. After this, I'm setting up the Cushing Concert, woo! And we'll be volunteering to, you know, set up and also take down all Situate public school concerts. And we're really excited to begin our community service. It's great, like, we get to get the entire community interested in music, how cool is that? And we hope to have the club grow. So, we also have winter concerts going on, on the 11th, Situate High School. Small, out-of-school ensembles will be performing at 7:00 in the Center for Performing Arts, and on the 17th, all the in-school ensembles will be performing at 7:00 in the CPA. Districts auditions, nearly 25 Situate High School students auditioned for the band, jazz band, and choir in the Massachusetts Southeastern District Competition. So many students got in that like I couldn't even write them down, because it would have taken me 30 minutes to say how many students got in. So, if you would like to see who got in, you can check out the Situate Band's Instagram. We'll have a full list of jazz band, chorus, and symphonic band, also orchestra students that got into our southeastern district.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
I went to the Wampatuck Elementary Holiday Band and Concert. It was, I don't know if it was the first year that you guys have been involved, but it was much more efficient and organized than I recall last year. It was great, it was enjoyable.
Okay, moving on, next up is acceptance of the minutes.
I know that I had asked to delay the No. 18, but I read it, they're fine now, they're corrected. So, I made a motion to accept the October 21st, 2019 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any questions or comments on the meeting minutes for the 21st? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the November 21st, 2019 School Committee meeting minutes.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up is the leadership report.
So, I'll be brief with my part of the leadership report, we're going to turn some of it over to Ms. Arnold this month. As you heard, one of the highlights from last month was just the Thanksgiving game. I want to just make a couple of quick announcements about that. First, many thanks to Mr. Lewett for all of his incredible work behind the scenes, as well as Mark Novak, obviously. But that project would not have been possible without Bill's passion, without his commitment to this project. It's something he's been working on for years, and to see it really come to fruition in the community has been, I know, exciting for him and exciting for our students as well. I also want to thank our athletic director, Pete Umbriana, as well as Michelle Patterson, their incredible work behind the scenes to make sure that the space was ready to go. It was, it's still a construction site, obviously, so it took a lot of effort for the months leading up to that game to make sure that the space was ready, both for our students and community members, as well as the students and community members over in Hingham. And again, a great outcome of the game, certainly with the win, but we're really just excited to be able to see that progress on this project. Finally, just a brief reminder to the rest of our community, that was the single day that we had opened up the field, otherwise, it remains closed until the entire project comes online later in the year. Folks are really excited about it, and occasionally find themselves trying to get out onto the field, but it is a construction site, and doing so just slows down our construction crews. The company Argus has been incredible and very patient and flexible, but we would ask our community members and our students, please stay off the field and out of that construction site until it's fully completed. The other Situate Experience update, in a moment, I'll pass along to Ms. Arnold, but I want to just, for sake of fluidity here, just skip over to the legislative update. I've spent, gosh, about a year or so keeping the committee up to date on the update to Chapter 70, officially called the Student Opportunity Act. You can see pictured there Governor Baker signing that into law. It's really a huge accomplishment for the entire state, the entire Commonwealth, and a great step forward for all kids in our Commonwealth. What I'd like to do is maybe just give you a minute or two summary of it, and then I've asked some of our local legislature, members of legislature to come in in January and give the committee a more detailed update. They really put a lot of work and time into this, and so, I'd like to make sure we give them the spotlight and the recognition for their work, and they can also give you some more details on it. So, a few quick updates about the SOA, Student Opportunity Act. The first, and probably the most important, is that it gives a major update of Chapter 70. A reminder, is Chapter 70 is part of Mass General Law that outlines how state funding goes to schools. That funding impact will actually result in changes for FY '21, so signed into law just a few, you know, days ago, and will already impact the upcoming fiscal year. We're waiting to hear back from Desi about the exact numbers and estimates, but we expect to see a modest bump in our Chapter 70 funds here in Situate, and probably more significant bumps in communities like our gateway cities around the Commonwealth. It also updates the way that low-income census is taken across the Commonwealth. The SOA was really focused on making sure that the state emphasizes ways to close the achievement gap for historically underperforming groups of students around the 351 districts in our Commonwealth. The way in which they calculate low income will be beneficial to, again, a lot of gateway communities. Letter C that you see there is Special Education Circuit Breaker, that's going to be a huge impact here in Situate as well. One important highlight for us to keep in the back of our minds about the SOA is that Special Education Circuit Breaker is intended to be fully funded at that 75%. Sometimes, that changes year to year. And also importantly, the state in FY '21, so in this upcoming fiscal year, is planning to begin rolling in reimbursement for transportation as well. That's huge for communities like ours that have a number of students that require services maybe outside of our community, and that transportation in previous years was not reimbursable. Some other updates, charter school tuition reimbursements, those again were also similar to Circuit Breaker, not always fully funded. The SOA articulates language to try to fully fund those. One that's interesting is letter E that you see in front of you, is this Evidence-Based Three-Year Plan. And the language in the law alludes to a plan that all districts will submit to the state, to the commissioner ultimately, that outlines the ways in which the school committee and the school district will work to provide resources and programs to close the gap for historically or traditionally underperforming groups or underserved groups in any given community. There'll be more information coming out on that, probably in the next month or so, some regulatory information should be on the way from Desi, but that's something that all school districts have front of mind. School District Reserve Funds, we don't currently have a school district reserve fund, so for example, a special education stabilization fund, but that is something I've mentioned to the committee a few times, it's something that you'll see as part of the FY '21 proposal for Situate. And the language in the SOA essentially expands the way in which school district reserve funds, so sped stabilization funds, can be used to include high school programs for students that may require transitional services and so on. And lastly, there'll be some grants programs that'll be competitive grants, that'll go out for all school districts in the Commonwealth, we're waiting to hear more information about what those grants might look like. So, again, my hope is that in January, you'll see some of your state-elected officials here to give you more information about this, and it'll be an opportunity to recognize their efforts and their work in helping bring this to the Commonwealth for all kids. I'll take any questions that you have on, and if not, I'll pass it over to Ms. Arnold to talk a little bit about our Professional Development Day.
So, kind of two questions on the Circuit Breaker. Number one, is the transportation, is it just to file out 25% of eligible costs, or does that go on to the foundation budget Circuit Breaker calculation as well?
So, the first year is 25%, and the intention is to roll that up. And so, they're going to put, Desi's going to put out a, I think it's a six or seven-year rollout plan to see what that total percentage will be at the end of seven years? Is that your question?
I'm just trying to separate, is the other district placement tuition is a separate line item than transportation? So, transportation is its own line item, right now, it will be 25% of that transportation-only cost, which would be reimbursable.
And your question is, is that 25% after four times above foundation?
Correct.
We're waiting to hear back from Desi, and you'll hear more information about that in January with definitive regulatory guidance.
Okay. And then, with that, I think I can ask this question, I know that in our capital plan, we requested vans. I'm not sure, have we presented, do they recommend that yet?
Still to be determined, it's going through the capital process.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Other questions on Student Opportunity Act, and again, more information will certainly be coming over the next month or two. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Arnold, who will give you an update on Professional Development Day.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Griffin. I wanted to update the school committee on our full-day Professional Development Day, the first beyond, since the school year started, our first full-day Professional Development Day, which was November 8th. If you recall, back in November, I had sent you the agenda and the outline for the day, and our focus was social-emotional learning. Last year, the Professional Development Council had determined, based on staff feedback, that we should focus on social-emotional development. So, this year's Professional Development Council, I'm missing a person, I just noticed, it's Diana Mullin, she's also on that council. We got together and planned this November 8th day, which was all about social-emotional learning. It began with an overview in the morning from Nadia Riley and Flo Dickerson. Nadja Riley has been working with the district for a while, I talked about her before, you may remember her. But we began with an overview in the morning, and basically, we determined that we should focus on social-emotional learning, because we're seeing a rise in student needs for support, and also, it covers, or it meets Priority Three in the strategic plan, which is developing resilient, happy, and balanced students. So, what is it? The way it was defined for us by PEAR and Dr. Riley is, as you can see, development of capacities to manage and express emotions, to form positive relationships. And that's really the key that we focused on for the day, building positive relationships, adults with students, adults with adults. It was a lot of work around relationships, because we believe that's the core, that's So, we had some outside facilitators, these are the people who came in to help us. Brianna Boggs did a session at the high school to talk about, in response to a racial controversy they had at the high school, where a student was using blackface on a video, so she came in to help the faculty sort of work through that and understand what it meant for the students and for their own professional development. Flo Dickerson was, is from PEAR Institute, then we had Kathy Lopes, who was the director, or was at the time the director of sort of Professional Development and Outreach, and then, as I mentioned, Dr. Nadja Riley. So, these are some of the workshops that we had. These were all facilitated, the majority of these up here, these were all facilitated by our own staff. Okay, some, we had other workshops that weren't facilitated by our own staff, but these were facilitated by our own staff, who volunteered to do this. You know, in some cases, we approached people and asked them, or people just volunteered when they heard we were looking for people. And these are the people who facilitated workshops on that day. We had a support team, you'll see at the bottom. These people ensured that the day ran smoothly, whether it was technology, room setup, making sure all of the logistics were handled. And we did a survey at the end, the results, it was a lot, there's a lot more data and information, but basically, three of the top positives are up there. I'd say most enjoyed the focus, because there were some people who asked for different things, like working in their rooms, rather than doing the Professional Development or working on new curriculum, but overwhelmingly, people felt like it But overwhelmingly, people felt like it was a really good day. We also, I forgot to mention, we also had staff facilitate workshops that were for staff in their own social-emotional development, so taking care of themselves as well. So we will continue this year-long focus. Our next Professional Development Day is March 5th, full day, district day, and we'll focus more on social-emotional development then.
Thank you. I know that, I saw the list of classes for the teachers to sign up for, and they looked really interesting.
Yeah.
Wish I could have taken one.
I can't say enough about the council, all of our people on the council who helped to make this day possible, and the facilitators, the staff facilitators. It's just the best. We have the best staff. So for them to do such expert work was really impressive.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, next up is the first presentation, the APSAT College Testing Presentation.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tammy Rundle. I'll pull up the information she has for you. Give me just one moment. Tammy, is that on?
Turn it on.
This is my annual College Board Testing Score Report that I provide to the school committee every year. What I'm going to do tonight is talk about the SATs, the ACTs, and the Advanced Placement Program that we have at Situate High School. And I will go over what those acronyms mean for those of you who may not be familiar with the acronyms of the College Testing Force. So the first one we're going to talk about is the SAT, which is the Scholastic Aptitude Test. This is sponsored by the College Board. It was redesigned in 2016 to, maybe back in the day, with a verbal and a math component. Now it's an evidence-based reading and writing component, and a math component, and plus an essay at the end of the exam. So the scoring ranges from a 400 to a 1600, which is combined from a range of a 200 to 800 on the SAT, evidence-based reading and writing, and a 200 to 18 on the SAT math. So the average score on each section is about 500 points. So these are our scores from students in a class of 2019 who took the College Board SAT last year. We had 88% of our, we had 193 students actually take the SATs last year from a class of 2019, which is about 88% of our graduating class. Some students took, students have the option of taking the SATs with or without the essay. And so what we did was the College Board divided up the scores. So you can see from here, students who took the SAT with the essay, their average score was 601, for the math was a 598. And for students who did not take the essay, the average score was a 590, and the mathematics score was a 588. And if you take a look at the next slide, it's going to show you that our scores are above the state mean and the national mean for both the evidence-based reading and writing trends and also the math trends. So we continue to climb our score, increase our scores every year, which is a really nice trend to see. So the other test that has gained popularity in the area is called the ACT, and that's sponsored by the American College Testing Program. The ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness. There are four academic tests. There's English, math, reading, and science. And there's also a writing component, which is the essay at the end of that exam as well. And the scores range from a 1 to a 36. So it's a completely different scoring mechanism than the SAT. And 18 to 23 are the benchmark scores. So you can see that over the, last year, our Situate mean was above the national mean in all areas, a little bit lower in, actually, it's above the Massachusetts mean and the national mean in all categories. Oh, except for me. I'm sorry, that's not true. I'm just saying that again. In English, math, reading, science, the composite score, which is the average of all of them, you can see that we have done particularly well. And our reading scores, our math scores are pretty good, and our English scores are good. Our science scores are a little bit tricky because they actually, it's more of a data analysis-type academic achievement-based test. So they're really measuring like the biology. So it's not so much like the MCAS and biology. It's a different type of test. So I think that's why our scores might be a little bit lower on that piece. And one of the things we have been tracking over the past 10 years or so is the ACT participation of SAT test takers for Situate High School. Probably about 10 years ago, we probably had about, you know, 50 students or so take the ACT. And we've been seeing a steady increase in the number of students taking it. Until 2017, we had a lot of students take it. But we have seen a decline in students taking the ACT. And last year, we only had, I believe it was... We only had 68 students take it, whereas last year before, we had 107 students take it. So I'm trying to think of why that might be. I think students are getting more used to the new SAT that came out in 2016. And I think students just have that more comfort level of taking the SAT test. We offer the PSATs here for students. They take it as a sophomore, and then again as a junior, which is a preliminary SAT, which will get them ready for the SAT. So we have a lot more opportunity for students to demonstrate their abilities on the SAT. And we also offer a practice SAT and a practice ACT on a Saturday in January for our juniors to kind of give them additional practice to help them get ready for these different tests. So the Advanced Placement Program, been alive in Situate. It's a program sponsored by the College Board, and it offers college-level curricula and examinations to high school students. And so American colleges and universities will grant placement and course credit to students who obtain high scores on the examinations. And the examination scores range from a 1 to 5, with 3 being considered proficient, if you will. And we have a number of course offerings in the AP program. Everything from calculus to computers to English language and literature. We offer French Latin. This year was our first year that we introduced AP Mandarin, which is very exciting. And then this is the percentage of the total AP students with scores of 3 or higher. So you'll see that we are maybe down a little bit. And then last year, we were 73% of our students earned a 3 or higher. But if you see from the next slide, we had an increase in the number of students taking them. So we have an increase in the number of students taking the exams, which is fabulous. So if we take a look at the last slide, our participation trends for the AP over the, since 2009 has skyrocketed. In 2009, you had 75 students take exams for 120 exams. And this year, I have 315 students taking 615 exams. It's just, and I think that's because we, as a school, our philosophy is to encourage students to take AP exams, I'm sorry, AP courses. We really foster that growth mindset for our students. So we really encourage students to take those challenging courses. And it's really been showing that our work for the students. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Does the, the SAT without the essay, do those students take that for college acceptance? And does it, does it matter if they take it with or without the essay?
We recommend that students do take it with the essay. These lines of schools will, it's related to individual schools, but we recommend that students take it with the essay because colleges will give the essay, they're not a kind of school itself.
Okay. And I have a question about the number, the AP course load. I know it's a lot, it's a lot more work than regular classes. And we just heard the presentation about social-emotional learning. Was there any discussion of maybe limiting the number of AP classes? Or do you notice that the students that take the full course load of AP classes are under a lot more stress?
Yes, they are under a lot more stress.
So...
But I think what we've been over the past three or four years, we've really been taking a look at that closely in our department, and really taking a look at the balance for students, and having those individual conversations, say, okay, you signed up for a 6AP. Let's really, let's have a realistic conversation about this going into junior year, junior year with the college admissions, application process. So we really could have those thoughtful conversations. And students, I would say, we have seen a decrease in the number of students taking an exorbitant amount of AP courses through our work, just to help students find balance. But we want to encourage students to try them. We also want students to find that balance of what's right for, and we try to tell students what's right for themselves, and maybe different for their peers. Where they say, oh, my friends need to take, my friends are taking 6ATs. I should only, I need to take 6ATs. So really take a look at their individual balance.
I just want to take a moment to recognize that, that point right there, Ms. Rundle, and kudos to you and your team, and to Mr. Worgo as well. This is such an individualized conversation, right? Every kid's trajectory is different, every kid's goal is different. And so to help students create that balance of pushing themselves and challenging themselves and making sure they're focused on that growth mindset, and still balancing that wellness component of life. And the second thing, I just want to recognize you and your team, and again, the high school team in general, for this idea of helping every student challenge themselves to try to take at least one advanced placement course. Because if a student is thinking about college, it's important that they've had the exposure and experience of a college-level course before they get there, right? So they understand what it is they're in for at college, and the exploration of that kind of rigor and that kind of pace is helpful for a student to start to make their plans as they think about graduation in high school and beyond.
Thank you.
One question, the number of students is 315, so I'm assuming that some underclassmen take the, some AP exams as well?
We have, we have one course that's open to sophomores, but it's usually juniors and seniors. That's the number of students taking exams. That's not the, that's less, I have to figure, I have to, I will have to figure the number of students actually taking AP courses, because not all students take the exams that enroll in the AP courses. So students can take the exam, take a course, but not necessarily take the AP exam unless required.
I just want to make sure that that number was accurate because I just default to only seniors can take APs, but that's not true.
That is not true. We have a lot of juniors taking AP courses as well.
Okay. And then kind of on Janice's question, Superintendent Griffin, I know that our participation trends are well up, and our scores are down. So what's the equilibrium there? Like what number of kids should be taking courses? AP courses versus AP exams versus this? Like, our scores are going down, is that a good thing? Or should we discourage kids from enrolling in the course or discourage them from taking the exam? I don't see a reason for encouraging them to take the course yet not take the exam. I would think that your goal would be to do that.
I'll jump in then if Ms. Rundle wants to add anything to it. We've had these conversations, actually, when we started developing our strategic plan and identifying the kinds of things we want to measure for student success in Situate. And we believe strongly that participation is the top priority for advanced placement, that students being able to take the exam, even if it means they take one exam, or take one course, excuse me, in their entire high school career, is beneficial to them. Now, whether they take the exam or not is an option. And if they can and they do, that's great. And there's an opportunity for them to potentially earn college credit. But it's about exposure to the AP course and AP curriculum that's of benefit. That being said, I want to be transparent with the committee. The more you expand and open and challenge all students to try to take college-level courses, your aggregate score will inevitably not be the same. That's just a reality of the math and the statistics that exist. But that's a philosophical line that we feel strongly about. And it's our belief that we want to try to let every student who is interested in exploring college have the opportunity to take an advanced placement course to explore college before they ever get there. Ms. Rundle, do you want to add anything?
No, that's exactly what I just said. And we will find that more and more colleges are doing away with accepting AP credit. So a lot of students are saying, I'm not into college. I don't need to take, I don't need to take the exams to, to apply for credit because the colleges that are applying to don't accept them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, Tammy, can I ask you one question?
Oh, yeah.
Tammy? Sorry. When kids are applying to colleges, are we seeing that colleges are putting a less emphasis on like the ACT or the SATs? And that's why we're seeing less kids necessarily take the ACTs? Or is it more on a case-by-case basis, I guess, with each college?
It's really a case, it really is a case-by-case basis. I'm just, we recommend that students maybe take a practice SAT and a practice ACT and see where their comfort level lies, because it's a different, the tests are different. One test is fast, 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 fast. The other one is a little bit more slower-paced. The SAT, when it was redesigned in 2016, it was, the premise for redesigning it was because we had the, they had more students taking the ACT than the SAT at that time. So the College Board redesigned their, their test to make it more like an ACT, more achievement-type test. But it's really individualized.
I'd like to open up the floor to one question. Can you just state your name and your address?
Do you find that because registration is so much earlier this year that your number of competing kids is a lot lower?
Actually, it's higher.
It's higher?
It's higher. I think the students have to make, so what Ms. O'Neil was saying is the College Board changed their processes this year and required all students to register to take an exam by November 15th of this year. Where before, it was like March or April when I had to order the exams. Because they, research had stated that they, that students who committed to the exam earlier would do better on the exam because they're more committed to it. So that was, that was the...
And one question, I know that you've always been a three-plus.
Yeah.
Maybe two, three, four, five? Because I mean, most colleges, like you said, are doing away with AP credit. And a lot of colleges now are only giving credit for fours. So I think it's important for parents to see too how students are doing in those classes and what are they going to do next year.
Yeah, that's data, I can pull, I can pull that, that. I'd be happy to share it out.
Hey, any other questions?
Do we have any data, Cheryl Rydell at Adelira, do we have any data on the number of students that are participating in preparatory courses or taking the exams, who are buying extra guides on the side and training themselves to take the test as compared to the students that are doing it blindly just after taking the classes?
I don't have any data on that.
Is there any way to track that, I wonder?
I've never, no one's ever asked me that question before, so I'd have to do some thinking about it. But I can certainly pull, do some information. I can do some surveys to the AP teachers and the department chairs and the students themselves. So send me a email, we'll be looking at that for you.
And a point that we should make is the cost of the exam. I don't know if a lot of people are aware. And that does factor into how many tests kids will take, especially seniors.
So the exams are expensive. Each exam is $94. If students who are on a free or reduced lunch fee, exam fee is $53 for each exam. So it does get expensive, but we do offer financial aid for students who need it.
And when they register in November, they have to pay then to take the exam?
Yes, yes. And we work with families. So if we have students that have a hardship, you know, we'll work with students in terms of like doing a payment plan, or that information is all sent out to the families at the time of the registration. And we do get, I do have a number of students or families that we're helping.
Just one point to that, I think it's important to, as juniors and seniors, to maybe look at the schools that they may think are going to because if they're not going to accept the AP credit, maybe not take the exam versus a school that may take AP credit, $94 to $12 spent. may take AP credit, $94 to go spend. Um, obviously my son has a vehicle, um, has thirty-two credits that he has right now to take the exam. And if gone to another school, he could get zero, even though he got the same score.
Right.
And it's zero. So I think that's important for families, parents especially, to think about it.
Hi, Mary from Talbot Street. Um, just one more point. You may know the answer to this, um, Tammy. My daughter's at UConn and she got four, five on one of her AP classes and she got waived out of the first English class. She got credit though. She might not have gotten credit, but she got to skip one of the general requirements because of the AP. So that's another thing.
All right.
Anything else?
Great. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up is the old business, the out of country field trip to Sucey and Bree. Oh, I'm sorry. Comments, statements and questions from the public.
Are we doing microphones today or?
Yeah.
It's fine. I can speak privately. I have a lot of kids and six brothers. So, um, Cheryl Rydell, Hadley Road, the first thing I would like to talk about is, um, a point of process, which is when you ask the public to come to the school committee meetings and you ask them to stand and you ask them to state their name and their address, I think we need to consider that because victims of violent crimes, of which I am one, are very protective of their personal information. If you are requiring somebody to state their street address and you are broadcasting that information and you're also making the minutes publicly available, that's information that's available to anybody who can do that search. And if anybody is aware of what town you live in, that creates, uh, dangerous situations for, for certain victims of violent crimes. That includes victims of crimes that haven't been committed yet. Because if they decide to stay in an address where, uh, in a town where the violence was perpetuated, people can look that information up later. So I wonder if there's a way that we can get the information for the public meetings by registering people who plan to speak and having them write their address on a sheet of paper that's available. I think it's something that we need to consider. Um, that was my first point. So my, my second, um, my second question today, or actually my first question was a statement, is I know that we've received, um, if any of the parents of high school students are here, we've received several notices about acts of, uh, acts of racism in the school. And the parents are aware that there have been responses to that and we are greatly appreciative of that. Um, but those are reactive responses and it comes at great cost to the students who, um, who feel victimized by, by these things. And I wonder if we're taking a proactive approach, um, district wide, um, that we start in elementary school to see if we can proactively look at this issue, maybe with some people who, uh, have a better perspective on how to implement programs who, who can help us make sure that we don't have these events in the future. Because obviously the sort of justice and the practices that we have now, um, you know, we're doing our best to fix what's already happening. But I think we have a real opportunity for leadership in this particular moment. And I'm wondering if we're making proactive plans to, to do so.
Uh, I can speak to the high school. There's been programming done at the high school level. Um, I'm not sure about the elementary. But that is definitely a good point.
Also, we, uh, as a district, when we're talking about the social emotional learning that we're focusing on, we are also focused, we are also doing work on cultural humility. And we're bringing in speakers and people who, uh, we have a couple of writers coming in to work specifically with the high school. Um, but we are expanding, we're looking for other opportunities that we can use across the district. But it is a focus for our next, one of the focuses for our next full day, professional day.
And the reason I'm asking that is because, you know, as I said, this is, a lot of the things that are happening are Band-Aid fixes to, to correct what's happening now. Um, and we have some programs that are already in the school district, right? The, the ACLU peer leadership program has been implemented in the middle school. Um, I don't know if that continues on in the high school or not. We have best buddies, which also, you know, teaches kids how to operate with, with other, um, students of, with differences. Um, but there are things like digital citizenship that can be applied to, uh, to elementary age students who are absolutely using the internet. And those ages are getting younger and younger and we're asking, uh, younger students to bring those promos. But I don't think we're doing our, our due diligence as a district to train them in the proper usage because they have access to the internet. And I don't think a lot of those younger children are aware of the consequences of some of those things. And I think it's something that if we address proactively at a much younger age, then perhaps we could, we can move the needle on these, these later incidents.
So if I can respond to that, Cheryl, we are doing that at the elementary schools. We do have digital citizenship programs. We, we have not begun them yet this year, but that will happen in their library special times.
Do you know what grade they're starting at or are they doing all grades?
They'll do all grades.
So they'll continue that along every year that they're, they're in the elementary school.
Yes. Correct.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the public? Okay. Now, the presentation for the Sucey and Bree.
I'm Jay Kobach, French teacher at the high school. And, uh, I'm here mostly to update you on a trip that we were planning. Uh, every two years, we take, uh, students to France who, uh, generally are marked in French. There are some exceptions. Um, we had a special occasion or a special opportunity this year in which there was a eager pause because the French teachers that we normally do the exchange with have some new staff that didn't want to take it on yet. Um, and so, uh, actually, could I actually pop the other, the Google Doc, because I can tell there. Um, and so I didn't want some of my students to miss the opportunity to do a school trip, um, partially because it's obviously special to do with your classmates, but it's, um, it's quite affordable. We do it in groups. And so anyway, uh, this is for the upcoming April trip. Um, we, uh, were hoping, we didn't have details that we do have to do now. So basically, as we always do, we stay with home state families in Sucey and Bree, which is our, uh, sister city. Um, thanks to Morgan Patrick Carr and the, uh, Sister City Association. We have an ongoing connection every year, every summer. We're sending students and even adults back to, to our two towns, um, which is a wonderful learning opportunity and it makes it so much more accessible for everyone. So, uh, for this shorter version trip, uh, we are not hosting. Uh, we did not host this past fall, but we are traveling. Uh, and because we have this ongoing program with Sucey and Bree, they said, don't worry about the exchange, uh, the hosting component. Um, we sent some kids here in the summer. We'll, we'll put you up. So the students that came this past summer, there was about twenty teenagers, um, six of those kids are not hosting, six of our high school kids. Um, so the second half of the week is when we are in Sucey. But just really quick, um, we take off monthly before April vacation. Um, we do three days in Normandy, which is going to be moving around, uh, in a, based in Kong, which is, uh, it's kind of like a train, a hostel and a hotel. Um, students have twin beds and rooms of two. And, uh, day one will do, uh, visit, uh, a couple towns. Day two will be the D-Day beaches, uh, very heavy in World War II history. Um, and day three will be Molle Saint Michel, which is more medieval history, um, and architecture. Uh, then we do one day in Paris. We're going to wait until the families come back because they're on vacation. Uh, so we don't want to, we don't want to give these too much. Uh, so we're going to do one day in Paris, a hospital that I've stayed at eight times in groups of kids. Uh, again, twin beds, rooms of four, most were bed per, ever. Um, and, uh, as we've always done, we're out in suburbs. We take a train into the city. Um, we stay together as a group. And we date trips into the city of Paris, uh, sometime taking the metro, sometimes twerking. And we will spend one, one and a half days, like it's twenty-second, twenty-third, uh, in Sucey. Um, they insist that we live in their town and neighboring, uh, and, and perhaps local high school. Um, so that's it for the specific updates on this current trip. Um, and I would, if possible, I would love to, um, touch on the trip for the next following year. Uh, this trip, that's the objective, not the agenda for that. Um, you have to wait for old business or twenty-two for another meeting.
Um, right now, the only item on the agenda is these, this particular, the 2020 trip.
We're going to stick to that.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'd be happy to show you a couple of videos, but, uh, because it's the same trip every two years, um, uh, it's nothing really new. Uh, the only new thing about this trip, uh, is that we're traveling by van, not by bus because we're such a smoker and that we're staying in slightly different lodging, um, you know, in Paris. Uh, so I would only go into it if you feel, you'd like to, if it's necessary.
Okay. Um, how many kids are going? The twenty?
There's only six students.
Oh, six.
Yeah. Uh, every, well, we do it every two years. We try to get twenty from Situate and twenty from Cohasset because our sister city is very large. And they always say to make it cost effective, we want forty. Um, and so we work our bus off to get twenty from each staff, um, which is challenging, but we almost pulled off.
So it's six total, not, uh, uh, how many from Cohasset?
Uh, so this year's class had said, no, it's okay because they have a smaller community.
Yeah.
They, uh, struggled very hard to find enough students in the exchange. So he said, we're going to wait and have these kids join. Cause he actually has sophomores come on the trip just to fill the spots. We only do juniors and seniors. And this current trip I'm doing this April is for seniors. Uh, we won't be able to participate next year.
Are you still able to get a group rate?
Uh, no, uh, we don't get any of those, uh, discounts. But the discounts only apply for, um, bus reservations and, um, museums that all essentially agree if they're under a team. So that doesn't matter. Um, and it's actually going to be, I think, it might be slightly more affordable because of the way the trip's going to find its. Uh, usually it's eighteen, maybe eighteen hundred, maybe two thousand. Um, we ask for up to two thousand, but we give back money we don't use. Um, and this trip is looking like sixteen hundred.
Okay. Any, anybody have any other questions on the trip? Yes. Oh, it does. Okay. All right. I was looking at the, um, the other one. No, I, I knew this trip is for 2020. Oh, okay. All right. Um, all right. Do I hear a, a motion? Cause we have to vote on this one particularly. Do I hear a motion? Hmm? No?
Uh, move to approve the request to take Situate high school students to France during the April two thousand twenty, twenty school vacation week. Well, actually it's April. Date is presented in April of two thousand twenty.
I'm sorry?
This is the twenty twenty?
This is for the twenty?
Correct. Twenty twenty. But it says, the date here just April vacation, but it's not. It's April vacation plus a couple of days. Let me start that over again. Uh, make a motion to approve the request to take Situate high school students to France, uh, as presented, April two thousand twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you very much. Uh, next up is the OCR Consolidated Resolution Plan.
Thank you. I'll be brief with your time, uh, with this committee. So you've seen this plan a couple of different times. You've had, uh, I think, two readings on it already. Uh, maybe just give you a minute summary as a reminder. OCR is the Office of Civil Rights. Um, as you may remember, we had a number of concerns brought forth regarding the accessibility of two of our older elementary schools, the Cushing and the Hadley Elementary School. Um, those were longstanding over the past multiple years. What we've done is put all of those, uh, concerns together in a consolidated, um, resolution plan with OCR. And what you have in your backup is the final version of that plan. Uh, my ask of the committee tonight is to vote on that plan. There's two things that I want to, uh, keep in the back of your minds as you, you think about your vote tonight. The first is simply that, um, the plan has been put out for our school community to offer any input that they may have. It's on our school website. We've also reached out directly to the Situate Commission on Disabilities to get their, uh, input directly. If, uh, we have, uh, input from, um, stakeholders that makes adjustments to this plan, we'll bring this plan back to you with an amended statement to, or any amended language that would be appropriate. But this vote tonight will allow us to send the, the plan as it's written currently to OCR for their final consideration. Uh, lastly, the plan has been under development, gosh, for about a year now, back and forth with OCR. So we believe the language here would be amenable to OCR to do a full consolidation of, uh, the, the current concerns with accessibility to both of those buildings. Uh, lastly, just as a reminder, the long-term plan is not to try to address all of these accessibility items individually. That's really a Band-Aid approach. We appreciate OCR's, uh, charge and, uh, role in this work to make sure that we address any concerns, but that our larger solution really should be considering, um, our SOIs to the MSBA, uh, that would articulate, um, essentially the consolidation of the Hadley and the Cushing elementary schools over the next couple of years with the building of a new, uh, elementary school that would be fully accessible to replace them. I can answer any questions that you may have on the plan.
Uh, have you had, received any fade, feedback since it was posted on the website?
Uh, no, not yet. But we did have our meeting, as I said, just a phone conference call with, um, Situate Commission on Disabilities.
But nothing, no emails or questions from the public?
Nope. But it's open, it's, uh, open to anyone in the public who wants to take a look at it. It's right on the, um, the website under superintendent. You can pull it up. And if you have any questions or even if you don't have comments, just want to learn more, give our office a call. I'm happy to walk folks through it as well.
And is the plan for these repairs to go, uh, on the capital plan?
Yeah. It is already part of the capital, uh, proposal that this committee approved back in October. That proposal and the entire capital plan went in front of the capital, uh, subcommittee, uh, November, I believe. We had our meeting in November. And then we're now just going to be waiting on the rest of the, you know, budget process ultimately to go through advisory and then ultimately to annual town meeting for appropriation if ultimately it's recommended and approved.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next, next up is the Niasq update. Mr. Worgo.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Just a quick update. Make it longer if you so desire, but I'll be here. Quick update on Niasq, the Midland Association of Schools and Colleges. The accreditation process is a senior process. So every ten years, an organization comes and oversees the work that we do. Accreditation really is a seal of approval in saying that the school is, is working in an acceptable manner in alignment with the seven standards. Niasq has changed its standard on when it came, the visitation committee came to see us when we started our self-study process, we worked on old standards which have now been updated. But let me just remind you of the seven standards that we focused on. One was core values, beliefs and learning expectations. Number two was curriculum. Number three was instruction. Number four was assessment of and for student learning. Number five, school culture and leadership. Number six, for resources for learning. And number seven, community resources for learning. We started the self-study process about eighteen months ago. And through that process, all our staff get involved in one of those committees. We have two chairs that run each one of those standard committees. And then all other staff are signed to one of those standard committees. It's a lengthy process. Some standards take shorter amount of time than others, but some take much longer. Process that involves the standard committee doing their work, putting a report forward that goes to the entire school for a vote, either thumbs up or thumbs down. Thumbs down meaning you need more work to do, come back for a second vote. Once that work is done, our steering committee, who's done admirable work and bringing a hundred thirty-three page report together, takes all the work of report together, takes all the work of those standards committees consolidates and puts work forward for the visitation team. And if you recall, between November 17 and November 20, 16 members of our NIASK visitation team came to visit us, headed by Dr. Karen McGurk. She is the Assistant Superintendent from Berlin Schools in Berlin, Connecticut. There was Scott Keith from Carver Superintendent's. We had 16 members from all over Massachusetts, as well as Connecticut, come in and do the audit of the work that we had done. We give them the self-report ahead of time. They come in and work their tails off looking at the report we did, and then start interviewing people to see if the work we did aligns with what they see and observe inside our school building. So for the four days that they're here, they are working. So they are interviewing district-level staff, they're interviewing parents, teachers, and students, and administration to find out where, how aligned are they with the standard work they were supposed to present it to them. They left on Wednesday, the 20th, and they gave us a quick preliminary report on how things went. And from my perspective, things looked well for them. There are some areas of focus. They leave us with critical needs and areas that we need to focus on. What we do back for them is we work on a two-year and a five-year targeted plan that addresses the critical needs that we found through the audit process and also that they found through their review of the work we did. They will give us a final report sometime in mid to late January. So again, all we have probably is a preliminary report from the chair before she left, but we will get a full report for them sometime in January. Our hope is that we remain an accredited institution. We continue to look at the work we're doing, the two- and five-year plans, keep us aligned with the work that we're supposed to do and to make sure that we're addressing the critical needs that were presented through this process. So it's a great process. It's, again, 18 months to two years' worth of hard work by our staff, especially our steering committee. We now wait for the report to come back, and then it's two-year and five-year targeted plan approach. And then 10 years from now, we'll have them back again through the process.
I just want to add one quick thank you. First, thank you to Mr. Wargo and his entire team. I also want to thank Mike Matasoff and Janet Downing. They helped coordinate our steering committee. They did yeoman's work along with Mr. Wargo and all of his team members to not just do the research and the self-reflection that's required for NIASK, but as Mr. Wargo said, to help put together 130 pages of that self-reflection in every aspect of our high school.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wargo. And we look forward to the final report.
We do too. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay, next up is on new, under new business, memorials and names on plaques.
So I'll kick us off, but really, this is a conversation for, for the committee. You can see in your backup, if you have a moment to take a look, a letter from Mr. Joseph Gibbons. As I know the committee is aware, his father recently passed away. And what I've got for you here is his, his letter. Mr. Gibbons was a longstanding member of the Situate Public Schools and a leader, an educator, and even long after his retirement, really a steadfast supporter of education in our community. He currently has a sign essentially that is set at the Old Gates Middle School, and as I'm sure you can appreciate with the plans to renovate and change that building over. His son, Joseph, reached out to us and has requested that that school sign be moved here to the New Gates Middle School to continue to commemorate his father. One thing that the committee does have to keep in the back of your mind, you do have a couple of policies that govern this work. First is your policy FFA. A, it's regarding memorials. I've got that in your backup as well. And the other policy that I think is going to be relevant for you is FFB, which is names on plaques. Ultimately, the determination to set any kind of memorial or any kind of, in this case, plaque, would be in the purview of the school committee. Because those policies essentially bar the committee and the school district from doing things sort of like this, it would require some action to the, by the committee to suspend at least the policy on memorials if ultimately the committee felt that they wanted to move forward to, to approve this request. On your agenda today is purely a discussion, and then I can pull together some materials for you as needed, and we can take any further action in January.
My only question for naming the, the circle in front of the school was the, at the Old Gates, it was named for Mr. Gibbons, and he was, he was there. So it's technically, it wasn't, when it was named, it technically wasn't a memorial. It was to honor him, because he was there to accept it. So to transfer that to this location, would it technically be a memorial in the sense that?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. I think that's why, that's why I offered you both of the policies to consider. I would say this, I think if it's the will of the committee that this is a good thing to do for our community, then I can put together a memo for you that addresses the policy standards that may be in question. I'd offer you my two cents. I think it's the right thing to do for the Gibbons family. I got to, to meet Joe Gibbons, Sr., just briefly, and he left his fingerprints on this school district to this day and changed a lot of kids' and families' lives. So regardless of the policy approach, it'd be my humble recommendation to, to find a way to move forward on this.
I think we also had an issue a couple of years ago, where there was a rock, a plaque on a rock at the Orchid School. I think it was before your time, Mr. Griffin, but I think because we already had that plaque already in place.
Right.
We agreed that it made sense just to relocate it to the new school, just so that, I mean.
Was that Mr., was that the, the rock by the old softball field for Mr. Svensson?
Yeah.
That they then renamed?
I couldn't remember the name of it yet.
Yeah. The gym.
So to me, it almost makes sense.
It's just transferring it?
Yes. It's not a new plaque. It's pre-existing.
Right. Pre-existing. Good.
Right. My only question is, I'm a fully inspired, my question is, is it's not an official street, correct? Which I, I don't know if we have to make that distinction if it does move here. It wouldn't affect an address, it wouldn't be, there's no other repercussions if we rename the circle that?
That's correct. It's an accessway, not an official street for Situate.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing from the committee, I'll put together some materials for you then on the policy, a recommend, a formal recommendation memo for January, and we'll add it to the January agenda with a slate for potential votes.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Next up is the video scoreboard proposal. Peter Umbriana and Bill Luet.
Good evening, school committee members and everybody else involved. We're here, Mr. Peter Umbriana, Athletic Director, here with Mr. Bill Luet, to discuss a, an exciting potential proposal for our video scoreboard that will go onto the new turf field that we put together. Mr. Luet here has kind of spearheaded this whole project and super, super excited, so we're just going to kind of go over some, you know, benefits of the video scoreboard itself and what it would do to the community first and foremost, but also the high school and the many different partners that would be using the facility.
First of all, I have to thank Karen, everybody, Rob Griffin, and the school committee for the past five years of your support over the whole field, field process, especially Janice LeBonne for going to all the CDC meetings, the selected meetings, and being part of the field study committee. I really appreciate all your help and support with that. And also Rob Marko for all your support and helping push this forward. Thank you very much for that. I think the most important thing about this video scoreboard is it's not just for student athletes. I gave you a scoreboard proposal that has dates and everything, but I just put up anywhere in the presentation the benefits of having the video scoreboard, because I think that's the key to this, this whole thing. It's interactive, spectator, student body, faculty engagement. This can be social media integrated, where there can be tweets that go up on the board, but also with the capabilities of an NFHS live streaming system, we can also put, you know, fan information up there. We can have, we can have live shots from the stadium, anywhere on the field. We can do interviews from the side of the field, so, so it's really interactive with students and student body and faculty, and spectators. It's dynamic. There are sports templates. But also, I think the key is, is school presentation tool. I think there's been some presentations here about outdoor classrooms. This could be used as an outdoor classroom. And that's what we're looking to engage students and staff in doing is getting more gates outdoors. It can be also used in pep rallies, graduation, commercial school, wide messages during games with anti-bullying tips for studying, health, eating options, always other things. But also, community events like Ruby Night and live streaming events. We can watch the Super Bowl on there for it. Student inclusiveness. The key here also is students that are not engaged in athletics have the opportunity to be engaged with this, whether they are invested in video or graphic arts. This takes part of this. It also takes control of sports entertainment and management. So it's not just students that are student athletes. Curriculum, Dectronics has a curriculum. I think you all have the information about that. And we can go as far as we want curriculum-wide with this, and I can go into that more. But to start out, it can be small steps. If we want to buy a curriculum, that's something we can be interested in ability. Also, it generates revenue, which is community partners. This is going to be a big part of this, and also the big part of getting the scoreboard is generating the revenue. And because basically this is how we're going to raise the funds to pay for this. And it's a state-of-the-art facility. If you were there for the Thanksgiving game, it was absolutely awesome to be there for that game and see what we have. And right now, I think we're going to turn it into that, basically showcase venue that people are going to want to come to and see what their fields could look like. Instead of all-turf facility, okay, it's going to be a nice facility that also engages the community with walking trails, engages everybody into every, in this facility. So the next. So I have the scoreboard. So that's the scoreboard that's out there right now on the left-hand side, okay? That's what it would look like with the video scoreboard. The video scoreboard is 13 by 25. So it's basically a jumbotron. The way this would be paid for is through advertising. Now, what's different about this is this isn't going to be on the outside of the board and seen all the time if people walk on the track. These advertisements that would be on the side of the board would be there just when the scoreboard is on, when the antiques. This also has the ability to show commercials and basically if, if static ads, it could pop up there during the timeout if you want. But that's how this will be paid for. I also gave you some scoreboard advertising packages, but we won't be working with Dectronics, and they're experts on, on how to go through this process. Speaking with white dudes, or with Dectronics strongly believes since schools are moving towards this, lots of schools are moving toward this, with Hanson has it right now, Pinnon's looking into it, Hanover's looking into it. We are one of the first, first ones that are making major moves into doing this, and we don't want to lose this advertising possibility for lots of businesses. So that's pretty much what it would look like. But also, during certain events, obviously, the advertising section, when you be there, if you're having Ruby Night, the whole screen's going to be showing all that. And as, if you were at Thanksgiving, that sound system's pretty loud, so if there's not going to be any issue with the floor, it's going to be all of that. So the bottom portion, if you look to the left, it says down to go and ball on. That, that section's going to be gone, but that section is going to be used at one of the other scoreboards or one of the other fields. So we don't lose any parts of the scoreboard. This was a part of the original project for the Fields Project. The problem was that we were looking to lower the price, and obviously, something that's $145,000, we're going to have to listen to lower it a little bit to the first. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sure you did.
I have a question. So when the, the new screen is on the scoreboard, this, the bottom part, which says down and to go in the, where will that be during a game?
That can be used, that can be moved to the back fields where the smaller scoreboard's going to be, where the football and lacrosse and softball field.
Okay. So if we're at the turf field watching a football game, and we want to know what down is?
That would be at the bottom. So you can peel everything on that. So you will have something that tells down the distance. That would be all on the video.
Okay.
In the bottom section. We can put it anywhere on that board. We can put it at the top.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And will it show replays?
It'll show replays, and that's what lots of people will, officials are going to do.
So you, you could, but you can't.
Yeah. And my, I said that.
What, what, is this at like the far end of the field now, or the, close to the tennis courts?
This is on the opposite end of the tennis courts.
Oh, okay. So a couple of silly questions. I think this sounds like a great idea. But what, is there like maintenance to it? And is there a cost to run it? Like, is it going to increase our utility bills?
The scoreboard, the scoreboard that we had last year costs more to run than these scoreboards. These are all LED lights, and there is a maintenance package that goes along with it. And like I said, there's going to be continued revenue with this that we'll continue to pay for any upkeep that is needed.
Okay. Like, if someone like shoots a lacrosse ball, like, could it like break the lights?
No, it's, it's covered in the front of it.
Okay.
With like rubber, plastic rubber. You can touch each leg and push it in, and there's not going to be issues.
Okay.
And plus, it shouldn't get hit by a lacrosse ball, because there's safety nets behind the goalpost.
All right. And can it be used for, like, I'm assuming we're going to have like track meets here? Is there enough, you can't display track meets though?
It will have everything up there. It will have, you can put the lanes, the names, everything. The abilities, honestly, the question is, what can the scoreboard do, not the candidate? Because you can sit there, you can shoot up somebody's face up there with all their stats and everything, and that's why going into the curriculum is absolutely astronomical as to what you can do. Like, if it goes into graphic arts, you can, these are the same boards that are used at Gillette, that's used basically at all the, at CAA colleges. It's at the garden, so the students from here, working this board and doing all this information, can go right there and work, work in those spaces. So when we go to the Super Bowl game, or when we go to the garden, they're going to be working the school.
Anybody have any other questions?
So just, just a couple of quick statements. First of all, again, thanks to Bill and Peter, their work behind the scenes on this has been incredible. I just want to emphasize a point that was highlighted. This is great for sports and opportunities like that, but it's also an opportunity to engage kids who may otherwise not be interested in sports or not necessarily participate in sports. And for me, that's, that's just as important, right? The student who may be interested in audiovisual, and we've got students here today doing our cameras. You talk about, you know, Mr. Luet's point about replay. You need students who are going to be able to be on the field and taking the video for the instant replay. You need students who are interested in graphic design to put the graphics up for the track meet and which lanes has which student and their bio and those sorts of things. So that's what really got me jazzed up about this opportunity, is that, yes, it's great for sports and athletics programs, which is fantastic, but it's an opportunity to maybe expand to reach more students who may otherwise not have gone to a football game or never been to, to a track in, a track meet necessarily. So seeing opportunities beyond that, I think, is also really nice. Any other questions?
Is there, we need to be aware of any like light requirements or things like that? Is it going to be really bright? And do we have to get any town approval to have this?
No, it's not. There's no issues like that.
Okay.
And in terms of approval before build, just like with any other build, we'd coordinate with our town colleagues, just like we did with, you know, a playground necessarily. Anything that we are going to be proposing for construction, we coordinate with the town.
Okay. And the original funding, and the cost was of 100 and, what was it, 145? I'm assuming you're planning on getting, we're planning on having sponsors pay for that. So what if you, do you have to pay for this all upfront? So it means you have, so you need to get 145, 145,000? So it means you have, so you need to get 145,000 worth of sponsors?
I'm excited about doing it.
Okay. And if we don't?
We're going to make it work.
All right.
So I feel like that maybe just changes gears to our next set of agenda items. And just again, to be really transparent with the committee, and maybe if you guys want to stay there for just a couple of minutes. Obviously, our existing policies in the school district prohibit this, right? Prohibit advertising and paid advertising. So I just want to be transparent about that. That being said, this is good for kids. It's good for athletics program. It's good for students. It's good for our high school. I think it's good for our community. And so the, one of the companies that the gentlemen have both looked at is this company called Daktronics. And essentially what they do is they say, "Look, we'll help you, school district, raise these funds, about $150,000, through advertising with local companies, local organizations." And ultimately, the goal to Mr. Lewett's point is to try to raise that $150,000. You do have to raise it upfront because you have to pay for it upfront. There's no payment plan in that, in that way. But if ultimately you can't raise that set of funds, all the funds would go back to any of the companies who had dedicated or put down that they would ultimately set those funds forward. The plan then would be if the committee would consider approving some adjustments to our advertising policy for our team to start working with a company and maybe even some students as well in our marketing, you know, classes and so on, to start looking at which companies in our region, in our area, would be interested in participating, dedicating some resources to our school, either for one year or through multiple years. In exchange, they would be able to get their advertising on select events. That's the 10,000-foot view of it. You've got the materials in your backup and I'd love to give you a walk through the policies when you're ready.
Maybe Bill could answer this. Has Daktronics indicated, have you gotten to the point where they've discussed how they go about marketing or fundraising?
We have some paperwork on how they do that. We, Pete and I have been working on the list of companies that we will be hinging out to and then setting up meetings for them.
Those companies like from Situate?
From Situate. Most of them are from Situate, but they're all some that are outside of Situate.
Okay. Thank you.
We need to approve the policy change first.
Right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up is the policy subcommittee proposals. First, the K, Policy KHA.
So you have three policies in front of you this evening. And we've timed them so that you got to see your presentation from Mr. Lewett and Mr. Umbriana regarding our video scoreboard. And we talked a little about the funding mechanism there. As I mentioned at the outset, the three policies that you see on the agenda are policies that would be required to be updated in order for our committee and therefore our district to move forward with this proposal and with this funding mechanism. Policy KHA is public solicitations in the schools. This one requires just some minor adjustments that you can see here. And these are adjustments that are also recommended by MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, excuse me. The adjustments are essentially focused on shifting the authority from individual school level to the school committee level when we talk about, you know, school, public solicitations in and around the schools. Again, today's reading is just first reading, so no vote necessary, but I can open it up to any questions that you may have about this one. I imagine there's not too many on this one, but you probably have a bunch on the next one.
Do you have any questions?
Oh gee, sorry. Yeah. There you go.
Can I just ask a question? Best-case scenario?
Yep.
Or I guess, let's say we're very successful in fundraising and they raised $175,000. Where would those additional funds go? And then I'm assuming every year we're going to need to continue to fundraise and we don't have a $145,000 expense every year. So where will these dollars be? Again, if this goes through, every year we fundraise, we're not going to want a blank scoreboard. Where are those funds going to go?
The funds can be appropriated by the school committee, actually. And what you can see in some of the next policies is that the committee and the team obviously can make recommendations to the committee and then ultimately appropriate those funds to support the athletics programs and to support maintenance of the scoreboard. As Ms. Lewett said, the maintenance is light, but it still does require maintenance and there can be some costs as well. Other school districts that have utilized this mechanism have used the funds to support, you know, new equipment and support different initiatives that sports programs have been interested in. And they've also used some of the funds to support some other AV programming as well. So again, when you think about the equipment that, the hardware that's required to have instant replay on the sidelines, some of that comes standard with the purchase. But if you want to expand it, that requires additional microphones and requires additional cameras and those sorts of things. But ultimately, the appropriation would be the determination of the school committee with recommendations, obviously, from the administrative team.
I have a comment on, under the, in the first paragraph under 1 and 2, where it says the school system. I think I should say Situate Public Schools versus just the generic version.
KHA, 1 and 2, SPS. Good. Any other comments on KHA for us?
Those are my only comments. Anybody else?
That one's pretty light. The next one may elicit more conversation. Pull that one up for you.
Okay. Is that KHB?
KHB, this one's got more to it. So again, just a reminder of the convention, strikeout is obvious and then anything that's in bold and underlined would be proposed additions to the language. This one has a combination of origins, just to give you maybe a 30-second summary about it. Obviously, a large majority of the material here is right from MASC. But we also took a look at some language that some regional, some districts in our region also are using. Duxbury as one good example here. And then our policy subcommittee probably spent, gosh, an hour just on this policy alone, sort of just batting it back and forth to try to make sure that we struck the right chord. KHB is advertising in schools. And as you can see, the original policy simply starts with the word "no." It implies that, "No, there will not be advertising in schools." And I will just say, the rationale is sound, right? The intention is that they, MASC, schools in general, want to make sure that if we're doing advertising, we're doing it thoughtfully. And that's thoughtfully pre-K to 12, that our audience is not just necessarily high school kids, but that there may be a preschool kiddo with mom and dad at a game or a brother or sister who's in third grade, whoever it might be. So whatever the advertising is, is focused on the values and the core values of our school district and reflect who we are and who we want our students to be as well. So you can see the language there is intended to open up the opportunity to be able to do advertising, as Mr. Lewett and Mr. Umbriana shared with you, but do in a way that's still responsible and do in a way that reflects the Situate Public Schools' values.
The second, in the second paragraph where it starts off likewise, do we need to put in there alcohol and tobacco products or something to that effect?
We certainly can.
Sure.
I think what we were talking about, I didn't speak to that a lot, but I think we did core values.
Right. I, yeah. I agree that core values would mean no alcohol and tobacco, but I also think we need to spell it out in case there's an alcohol and tobacco company that would argue that it wasn't in there.
Certainly able to add that.
Yeah. I think it goes without saying that we wouldn't put it up there.
Just because it addresses, "The purpose of advertising is to generate additional revenue for school-sponsored extracurricular and it can't support the budget." So can you give me some idea of what we, would it be like uniforms? Because I know that that's part of the budget, but would we be able to replace uniforms more regularly? Like how, I just want to make sure we can properly spend, again, best-case scenario, we build this and then every year we get some additional funds in the form of revenue that we actually can spend that revenue appropriately.
Sure. So the language that you're talking about here is right here where you can see a little, you know, hand thing there, wherever it is, the cursor. Revenue generated from advertising will not supplant the operational budget. What that means is that the school district shall not use this fund or use this resource to take the place of existing funds or existing operational budget. That is, if there's something that we're currently purchasing for kids or part of our programs, this resource should not take the place of that. And the intention of that language is so that this isn't something we become reliant on in the event that advertising changes, good or bad, right? That the, you know, football team's helmets or the track team's hurdles, whatever it might be, are still being purchased through, you know, our tax base and through the state aid that we receive through Chapter 70 and not dependent necessarily on some kind of advertising. The intention of that language there is that the advertising revenue should be able to go above and beyond, some of that maybe we weren't able to purchase that we wish we could have for kids that this revenue could then support.
I forget if we talked about this in the subcommittee, but for the first sentence, it says that the school committee can grant permission. Should this be something that the superintendent or his designee may also be able to grant permission for? Just in terms of, you know, if someone comes in two weeks before the Thanksgiving Day game and you really want to get advertising for that day?
Yeah, it's at the pleasure of the committee in terms of that. That's perfectly appropriate. There's nothing wrong with that at all. It'd really just be a committee decision as to whether or not you want to include that as well.
Were you thinking something like the Situate School Committee in, or their designee?
Something like that.
Something like that.
Okay.
So in this policy, are we going to have to approve every single person that's going to be sponsoring this?
Mechanically, what we'd propose is we'd do a slate for you. And so you see in your backup an example document that the athletic department and any of the groups who are helping set this advertising in place would use. It would give you an entire slate of everybody who's proposed advertising and how much they're ultimately proposing to contribute to the school district. That would then come before the committee. And if you had any concerns about any of those companies or the core values of those companies not matching ours necessarily, you could either address the entire slate or simply address any given one and put a hold on that. That way, you're not doing individuals. That would be just not efficient with our time.
With the exception of Mike just said, if we get a last-minute person, obviously, but is this something that's going to have a calendar like we're going to do at the beginning of every school year? Or it's going to be every quarter, every month that, you know, what if we add a new one?
The intent would be you'd do it once a year because you'd want to get all of this lined up and slated. Is it possible that you end up doing it if this is, you know, larger scale? Is it possible you do it every season? Sure. But I think that'd still be manageable if that were the case. I will say, we don't have a tremendously large commercial base in Situate or even in this region. So while I think this is a great opportunity, I don't anticipate our volume being unmanageable.
Right. No, I'm just concerned, I'm not sure if we really, not sure if I care to review every sponsor. I would leave that up to the, I feel comfortable leaving it up to the people in charge of doing it. If they think it's appropriate, then that's all. I just don't want to have to review every month a new sponsor. That's all. Not a big deal either way, though.
Well, I think if they're all, all the sponsors are presented at once, then we could do it that way. Yeah. Because it'll fall on us.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments on this one? This is probably the biggest change.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Next, JJE?
The last one's JJE. No major, big adds to this one. So JJE is student fundraising activities. This is really just simplified. You see a lot of language here about individual buildings approving different fundraising. Again, you can certainly read through it yourself there. The ad is at the bottom that I want to emphasize with you, and I've got an item that I want to put on the radar for the committee in general. So the ad that you see is here. Essentially, it articulates that students can participate, but that those participations should obviously be appropriate and should meet, again, the values of our school district ultimately, and that charitable purposes in fundraising is something that our students participate in and that should be approved at a building level with a prior approval of superintendent. The item that I want to just bring to your attention is this one that we've highlighted here. This is a proposed addition that I want to make sure, excuse me, is existing language that I highlighted for you because I know it's something that is, brings up a lot of passionate conversation around, you know, the kinds of activities that students could participate in in order to fundraise. Canning at the dump being an example of them, door-to-door sales being another example of them. The language that you see highlighted is our existing language with our existing policy. The subcommittee spent, again, significant amount of time sort of bantering this back and forth, bringing up different examples of what students currently do and what they shouldn't and shouldn't do. We left the language as broad, which is strongly discouraged, so that is not saying it's okay or not okay, to allow for individual cases, but that the school district position in general would be that we ask students to do other activities besides the canning and the door-to-door sales. I bring that up to the committee because I know it's just a topic that our community wrestles with sometimes and we're looking for some guidance from the committee that we can either bring back or if you feel comfortable with the language, simply move it forward to next vote.
Well, I'm curious as to what the discussion was like about the canning because I know that's, you know, I've heard, this has been a hot topic for years. And one of the arguments against canning was that kids could get hurt standing out with the can, but they have the car wash, standing in the street trying to wave cars in, they could also get hurt. So that was just, that's one argument for canning. Just curious as to what, if they're, all of that.
Yep. And weighing different organizations do have kids that are out there like playing music and as part of their fundraising. Some groups do it, some groups don't.
Well, I think some groups don't do it because they were told they weren't allowed to do it. And then some groups did it anyway. So I think clarification is definitely important.
Yeah. And we sort of couldn't, we didn't come to a solid consensus on what that decision should be. So now it somehow circles back to us, including you all.
Yes.
I think one of the other things was the equity. You don't want the football team going, you know, four times to the dump a month and the soccer team not getting that ability. So that was part of the thing that weighed on, you know, do we keep this? Do we, you know, how do we make sure that everyone has a chance if they want to?
Right. And I think one problem with the car wash fundraising is that we have a water ban most of the year. So those spring sports aren't able to, or, you know, fall sports aren't able to have a car wash because they can't wash the cars. And canning is such an easier, from what I've been told, an easier, quicker way to raise a lot of money, much more than the car wash, thousands of dollars, which is crazy. Yeah.
But devil's advocate, some of our committee members thought that, you know, just the whole impression of canning and having the kids standing out there felt very kind of begging for assistance at the dump, but was very sort of off-putting.
Yeah. No, no.
We went back and forth a lot on it.
Okay.
So what, the reason that we've highlighted with the committee is just what would be helpful would be just some stance from the committee. If you feel firmly about the strongly discouraged, that'll continue to be the practice and the administration can certainly approach it that way. If however you have a different view on that language, then proposed edit that language would help shift the administration's implementation of the policy.
I don't know. Maybe if we take out strongly discouraged, maybe just leave discouraged, that might be, that's a little lighter and, I don't know. That's my opinion. I mean, I know you, you spent a lot of time on this, I'm sure.
We did, but we really, we talked about it for a really long time and both, it was really hard to, you could see both sides of it pretty clearly.
Yes.
We hated the door-to-door. We didn't want to cut that.
I don't think they do door-to-door.
We pretty solidly all agreed that door-to-door was a sort of a thing of the past that wasn't quite, right? Safe or necessary even.
Right.
But we were torn about our specific Situate canning at the dump. It has its benefits and it has its, you know, benefits.
I almost meant to say this, but I know canning is asking for money, but what about the other option of actually doing the recyclables? Like is that another issue?
That's good. Can't get us all.
It's 12 months.
It's 12 months.
Yeah.
It's 12 groups and they don't give it out there. They maybe do it a weekend or two, but that's a lot, they can figure out a lot of that right?
Right.
It's done.
Yeah.
And it is a little bit of a safety thing with the kids.
Yeah.
But we can, where the dog park can, we...
And can, where the dog park can, we're telling, we have, we have.
And Peter, one of the things about the can drive is Hathley's PTO did it for a number of years. They made between three and $4,000 a year on a heavy month. So splitting that among all of our groups or any group that participated, the gain, it doesn't really benefit, you know, getting the people to go in and do it on a regular basis, especially during the week where you need parents to go in and do it for them.
I mean, I think we were probably leaning towards it was not the greatest way for our students to.
I think any, any form of fundraising, it is unfortunate, in my opinion, that we have to do that for the, for the kids. So I think there's no easy answer.
Well, we'll get these, we'll get these sponsorships from the scoreboard and we won't have to.
But that's true, though. That's the type of things that the canning would benefit, that, no, that's something like a scoreboard.
Cardigan also has the, even adults out there at all times. I don't think Rob was going to be up in the beginning. He's out there now, he's, he, I don't know if he might want to be up there and report a canning.
Yeah, on the weekends.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm going to ask if you, have you opened this up to public response yet to tell people that this decision is coming down?
Well, this subject of canning has been a long, just like years-long discussion in, among the local boosters for the, and I'm sure once this policy is finalized, it'll, it'll be caught, not, everybody will know about it.
Finalizing, before you finalize, it seems like it might be a useful thing to open it up to public comment, so those that have strong opinions one way or another feel part of the process. So you can get that feedback before you finalize it so you're not overrun angry organizations who didn't kind of, they haven't had a heart.
I don't, the problem with the canning itself, I don't think was when to do it, like, I think, like, what am I trying to say? It was some groups were told not to can, and other groups were canning anyway. And that's where a lot of the controversy and issues came from. So with this policy, we're not saying don't can, we just strongly, well, we are discouraging you to not can. So I think that will, right, we, yeah, it needs to be approved, but, yeah, it's never going, I don't think this problem will ever go away, even with this policy.
And in terms of the specific.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. In terms of the specific policy reading, so typically we do at least two public reviews of the policies before we vote on them. I can see this one probably going a third, depending on the amount of response we get back from people.
Okay, so first reading is presented to the committee and then it's posted on the website for people to review?
So all of our policies are already on our, on our school website?
Or first reading, it's already there.
Yeah, we had a subcommittee that went through a number of policies. This is the first time the school committee as a whole is seeing the, the policy.
Okay, any other comments on this policy?
I had one in the last sentence below the yellow highlight. So are we saying that any type of, like, a PTO event at a school would require superintendent approval if students are involved? Hathley did their holiday fair last weekend and there were kids that were involved in, you know, helping out. I don't think they touched any money at all.
Are you saying, just so I can all look at the same thing, you saying this right here?
Yes, yep.
So the language there is implying that the money itself shouldn't be held in the schools? More and more schools, as we talked a little about, are, and more and more funding mechanisms general are becoming virtual or through stuff, but occasionally it's just cash. And the language here is intended to dissuade any group or organization from keeping that cash held in the schools. So typically that's passed along to business office for student accounts and so on and not left in like a drawer in someone's classroom. That's what that language is for.
So like a PTO event would be outside of this policy? If it's inside the school? So last weekend holiday had, Hathley had their holiday fair, people were giving money donations at the door.
Yep.
Kids weren't touching the money, but, you know, the PTO took the money at the end of the day. Do they have to get approval from you?
No, no, they don't. And that's, this language wouldn't even apply to that necessarily at all. It's simply saying that after the event, and maybe we should offer some clarity on the language, that the money is not left in a building because then the school committee and the school is ultimately accountable for that set of cash, that pile of cash in some cases. So maybe we can offer some clarity on that language to distinguish between what you're asking and what the intent of that language is. That's sort of the standard mask language.
Okay, I read it as the actual collection of money coming in. That's why, I just want to make sure it's clear so that, you know, someone doesn't get approval and gets a slap on the wrist for the wrong reason.
Yeah, that's never the intent at all. So let me, let me work on some proposed language to update that when you take a look at your second reading to reflect, again, the, the storage of money is really the intent there.
Yeah, because I was reading that as saying no money collections, like nobody collecting money could.
Right. The, I see, I totally see what you're reading and that the operative word there really is held, but let me rephrase that. I'll reach out to mask quickly and see if they've got the language, but I'm inclined to believe that like storage is really what you're talking about there.
So after the event, you're taking it out?
Right, right. But I'm reading that and it looks like nobody should collect money at the school. Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is a good practice anyway, don't keep the money lying, you know, aside. All right, I'll make an edit for that. Thank you for that. Good. Well, I thank you for your discussion on this. Again, I knew it'd be a bit of a spirited one. I know that the policy subcommittee put a lot of energy into that, so I thank you all for your energy and time to help make the recommendations for the committee at large.
So I just have a quick question for next steps. So we meet again in January. You know, obviously, Mr. Loetner, Brianna want to get moving on the scoreboard. I mean, are we going to try to get this approved in January and then let them move forward? Or is, is there some type of timeline? I know Bill had something in his packet. I just want to make sure we're not holding someone up if this goes at the second or third meeting, especially since my case is in here and I'm sure he's going to weigh in in January.
Yeah, and it's, again, I, you know, we talked about it in subcommittee, advertising and collecting money and those sorts of things is an issue that school districts and school communities wrestle with all the time, so it's something that people have passionate views on. Our procedure is always that we do two readings for policies at a minimum. So what you'd see in your next meeting agenda would be discussion slash vote. It would be up to the committee ultimately. If you felt confident that you wanted to move forward with a vote, you certainly could. If you wanted to postpone something until a third meeting, that's possible, too. It's up to you. Does that impact the timeline for the proposal? Yes, of course. We can't move forward with advertising or soliciting advertising when you have a policy in place that explicitly says, no, you may not. One last item, just to offer you some maybe texture to this. You could potentially in January approve these policies and still ask the subcommittee to go back to the table, the drawing board on things like canning. And that doesn't mean, you know, a month or two months from there, you could get another update to the policy that addresses canning or door-to-door or something more specific, and you simply amend the policy thereafter. So that just gives you maybe layer of the land in terms of the mechanics.
Okay. All right. Next is, it's the second opportunity for comments, questions, statements from the public. Just state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm, I am.
Oh, okay.
I am one of the high school parents and I am also the co-chair of the Situate Metco Parent Organization. I am speaking on behalf of the Situate High School, Metco High School students who can't make it this evening. They are incredibly still upset of the racism, the racist events that took place just before the holidays. As you can imagine, they went through the holidays with this looming over their heads and, which is unfair to them, and it's something that they deal with every day in the school. And also offline, online, and, you know, digital citizenship was, you know, mentioned earlier, and you have to think about how, you know, offline, when they get out of school, there is still that community and they are faced with these types of acts, not just, you know, a one-off thing, not just weekly, we're now talking daily. And it's now targeted, you know, it's basically bullying. And it does need to be addressed, it needs to be taken seriously. In addition to digital citizenship, I do agree that there needs to be a broader education, that the learning has to take place, not just in the high school environment, but definitely at the lower grades, and not just with the students. I think that the education has to take place with the adults as well, whether they are teachers, school professionals, paraprofessionals, whatever the case may be. And I think at some point, the community too, should be part of that discussion. It shouldn't just be exclusive to the schools. You know, as I shared with Mr. Wargo, you know, last week when we met along with another Metco parent, is that Metco's been a part of your community for 50 years. And it's unfortunate that we are reactionary. Really, we should have been more proactive and these are things that should have been in place, education should have been in place decades before. And the education and the learning part should be more proactive and not reactionary. And as a parent, I also share that I feel for the students who now have to face disciplinary actions. And no one wants that. I don't want that as a parent. However, we fail students when we do not take the time, you know, to provide education, to provide a safe space for learning. And it's unfair that, you know, whether it's the Metco students or those who are posting these heinous, disgusting acts, it doesn't matter who's affected. Everyone should have had an opportunity to learn. And yes, you know, you do learn from your mistakes, but this is not the way to learn from your mistakes. And it's unfair to everyone involved. Do you want to say anything? That's it.
Thank you. All I can say is I'm so sorry that the Metco students have had to go through what they've been going through. There's really no excuse. And I, I know that in the, over the past few years, there have been a couple of programs to try to, you know, improve relations. There was the presentation, the, with a movie last year, and there was the.
The Hate U Give?
The Hate U Give, but there was another presentation, I think the year before that, Mr. Joy. I wish I had answers. It's just education. I personally feel that a lot of this starts at home, not just in the schools. So.
What I would like to make clear, and, you know, we've had this discussion, is that we are not here to point blame. We are here to basically present ourselves as allies, as partners, and, you know, we, you know, when conversations are happening, we would like to be at the table. We would like a seat at the table. And I think that you cannot address these issues effectively without having us at the table, you know, and having effective communication, whether it's with the students or with the teachers. And so, yes, our responsibility are to the children, but at the same time, too, I think we also need to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to learn.
Thank you.
Can I, can I get your address and phone number after the meeting? Thank you.
Thank you for saying all about those. Good to hear. And I'm just curious, like, administration-wise, is there an action plan now? I mean, I've heard sort of, you know, about all these different things going on, and so what, what is the action plan? Because it obviously can't continue in that way.
At first, just want to say this is an issue that our nation is wrestling with and you see, you see students making just bad choices that don't fit our core values in Situate. I appreciate this conversation about how we go forward as a community and also how maybe our students can be leaders in this school district and hopefully beyond it. One of the things that I heard today and I've heard in some of the conversations over the past few weeks is that this is a learning experience, not just for maybe students who made terrible choices that don't meet our expectations, but also students around them as well, right? Sometimes it's a situation where you've got a bystander who sees something and doesn't say anything, and they should as well. And they should stand up for a friend, they should stand up for a peer that they may not even know, but if they know that a student has said something insensitive, that says something racially insensitive or racist, or put a video out that, again, doesn't meet our expectations or our values, that you stand up, you do the right thing, even if it's hard and even if no one's looking necessarily. I don't want to sit here and try to tell you that there's immediate and easy solutions. There's not. Anything I'd sit here and say like, oh, X, Y, and Z checking off the list. This is about a conversation and it's about partnership. You know, we were at a Metco meeting just a few weeks ago and had a similar discussion around how do we work together to help educate all students here in Situate and educate our families, too, around what it means to live in the 21st century? You know, we talk a lot about being a global citizen, and I think one of the things that our community continues to work on and try to improve is to help our students see what the rest of the world looks like. Situate doesn't always look like the rest of the world. And growing up in Situate has some incredible opportunities, there's no question about it, but one of the challenges is it's a sometimes insulated community. It doesn't look and feel sometimes like the rest of the world looks and feels. And that means you have to have hard conversations. It means you've got to expose students to what the world looks like and that the world is. And that means conversations and engagement. And the programs are good, I think they're excellent, great, you know, good steps. I appreciate the work that Mr. Wargo and his team have been doing in response to kids making poor choices, saying things that are inappropriate or posting videos that are inappropriate, but it's more than just a program, right? It's more than just a single curriculum. It's about long-term conversations and hopefully it's about engaging students who may not see the world as they should with people who can help them see the world as they should. And so I don't want to sit here and try to list a list for you. I don't think that'd be respectful of the gravity of the issue, but I do want to know, I want everyone to know here that we as a school district, our school leaders, I know our school committee as well, are continually engaging students and families in this conversation and are certainly open to partnership and open to being able to expand the group at the table, to talk about the kinds of programs we offer kids and talk about the way in which we work with students who maybe don't meet our expectations or have that lapse in judgment or see the world in a way that they should rethink.
All right, thank you. Next up is the facilities update. Mr. Donlin.
Yes, as I stated, oh, I'm sorry. As I finished up the classroom, our office locks at Cushing, that was the school that hadn't, hadn't had this done yet, fast, the last time we had the facilities update. Security upgrades are done. We're now with the store. It's not going to be tomorrow, which I said here, this was yesterday, they got a little bit, it's going to be the 17th, next Tuesday. We're currently, Bob's currently now, along with Mark Thompson. The carpet contract is awarded to Kenmark Acorn with Conic and Monalto Machines. We're expected to switch over on the Christmas break. There should be no disruptions and representatives will be on site when we get back in January. We're working on replacing the dishwasher at the high school. It's vintage, it's a vintage machine. Very difficult to find our parts for this existing washer, dishwasher. We have one car, we need to get a couple more at least to make, do our due diligence. Four new doors at Cushing Round Entrance, handicapped accessible, are installed and working. This was grant funded. We replaced some mullions in the cell at the back door, that single door to the bus locker room in the back of the high school. That mullion in the cell has been all replaced. And that was grant funded. The mullions at the old, at the bus loop over here, the old entrance to the high school, the mullions on the cells on the bottom of those ones have all been replaced, too. That's all grant funded. We had a couple of small leaks at Jenkins Roof that we didn't get to last week because of the snow, and now we got one today. And I got a chance to talk to Bob today and see if they were, he said that they were small leaks, they really weren't, you know, bad leaks, but I'm sure that the teacher in those two rooms are affected, so we're going to get that as quickly as we can. We replaced the overhead door and we fixed the overhead door. We have two overhead doors, one goes into the ballroom and one goes into the old shop area. If people behind, over near where the athletic field. Behind, over near where the athletic fields are. And we replaced and fixed both of those overhead doors. And we have, Mr. Ambriani is supposed to remember this, lots of movement of materials on all gates, oh, he left. The old gate ceiling, two of the parts of all gates, getting ready for the new senior center. There's some athletic equipment over there. I should have borrowed that. And that's the facilities reporters have any questions?
What's a mullion?
A mullion, it's basically the, like a window mullion, we have the double hungs, so it's the, it's the part in between. So it's the, it's the, the outside casing of the door is what Bob told me is a mullion, so that's been replaced.
Is it removable a lot of times?
Yeah, they're removable.
You see behind, you have a mullion between them, but if you got to bring in something big and heavy, you pop out the middle.
You see that, they have the locks.
What is in the ceiling and where are we putting it?
We put it into, there are a couple of classrooms. We have some spare tires that we can't fit into the fire station yet. We're working on that, so we had to move them because they're, the fire station here that we have, we have a bay, that we fixed buses at over there. There's some tires, there's not many. We have some equipment for fixing buses that we moved to a different classroom and then we're going to try to clean out and have some other things around. And that was a lot of it. Basically bus equipment that we haven't got to the oil fire station yet because of other things that are there.
Were they holding the town by the auction or something?
Yeah, I think they're doing that now. I think Nancy's got some, she's got some things that have already gone. By the way, vote, social vote tech is coming down to put on a new shed in the second quarter, the second quarter where the, yeah, the performing arts center is, Rob and Bob and Jerry Thomas have all figured out a space that they're going to work over there, the social vote tech kids are coming over to make that for us.
We used to make our own sheds.
We did.
That's right, Mr., who, who was that? I forget when I was here.
We could put our names on for the.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, you're right. It's building our back.
Yeah.
There's a warrant, oh, any other questions on the facilities?
Can I just ask one general question, Paul? Going forward on these updates, could we get a list of just what's on the docket of things that we're going to fix as part of the facilities updates? Like if you know those windows are going to get replaced somewhere or doors are somewhere, can we just see that list at the bottom, maybe not dates if you don't have them, but just here's what's on our roadmap of things that we're worked on fixing?
Okay, yeah, I can, I can.
That's also outlined in the facilities plan, they improved in the.
Okay, I was saying more like smaller things than like the bigger facilities.
There's just the small ones there as well.
Yeah, I can fix, do them if, if they come up.
Okay.
No, I, I.
Just if something, if.
Two hundred dollars for December back, what we're going to have, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it's on the facilities update, then that's, I can go there, that's fine.
I do have one question about.
Sure.
The grants that are funding these, what, where are we getting the grants?
We got those grant from, I think it was Mark Thompson applied for those, safety grants. So there was about three of them that we got. Well, no, the 240,000 was from the town, but.
Twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Anytime we see a grant that's a facilities related grant, some of them we're able to apply for, they usually are tied to the, particularly the Title I formula, which is tied to low income status for a school district. Anytime there's some small grants available, I know Bob Dillon does a nice job, along with our colleagues at the town as well, VPW, to grab any small amount of resource and try to address it toward whatever the pressing need might be in a building.
Right.
Thank you. And the warrant signatures?
Yeah, Mr. Gates signed a warrant on the 20th for 350,074 and 40 cents. Put that into the minutes. You can see the breakdown on what we spent it on. Okay.
I don't have that on the, on the.
Oh, you don't?
Okay. Oh, that's at the top.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, next up is correspondence.
Just two items of correspondence. Want to thank you from Val Baker over at the Situate Food Pantry, volunteer over there. We had students from around Situate Public Schools, especially Situate High School donating food for families all around Situate and in our region as well. The food pantry obviously collects all of that food and was able to serve about 150 local families, thanks to the donations of our students and our families. So many thanks to Val Baker and all of the work that they do at the Situate Food Pantry and certainly thanks to our students and families who donated over the past month or so in this holiday season.
And.
Another just your town clerk's 2020 election schedule, you've got it there in your backup.
So the day of the primary, there's no school, but there's the PD, is that, yeah. Anybody have any other questions about? Any other business, anybody wants to mention? And future agenda items, I think one, in January, we'll start talking about the superintendent search and what we're going to be doing for that. And do I hear motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.